So it's, it's, the idea is that you've got a minimal amount of, of, you've got like four meg of, of erasable, you've got a flash card which you can put a lot of stuff on, you, you've got an entire web interface, you have Bluetooth LE, which is the long range, low power version of Bluetooth, you've got a pretty complete system. And it's, and it's, 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 you know, if you blow it up, it's a, it's fine, you know, another fifteen bucks. It's not a big deal, it's something that you can play with and put various places and, you know, have fun with. And that, that is, I want to do a, a much higher end board and I have, you know, Xilinx development kits, et cetera, I have the GoIn development stuff and I'm, I'm pursuing this low cost board because it fits, you know, it will fit into this. So, you know, this is, uh, uh, this is my prototype, you, you throw this down a well and it, uh, it measures the water depth, the salinity encroachment, the temperature, you pull it out, slap it onto a QI recharger, it becomes a Wi-Fi hub and dumps its data to your cellphone. So you only, you only have to, you know, it'll run for six months on the, it's drawing, you know, maybe a, a couple of micro watts, you know, it's probably ten, ten, ten micro amps in that range, so it'll run on the sixteen, six hundred milliampere battery for infinity. And, uh, so I'm, I'm, that's, you know, um, so I'm, I'm, uh, I, I will spec out the board once I have the design. Because that's the way I tend to roll. But it's, you know, in, in terms of, Pete was talking about, he, his target was a, um, an eight year old kid in Sarajevo or something, and that's, that's quite laudable. I, I think that, you know, a board like this would be really good for, you know, kids to play with. Not that I have any experience with kids, you know, I'm not, they, they get in the way. But it's, it's, I, I think it could be, and I think it could be a good platform for the more sophisticated people, um, you know, it's, 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 I don't want to over-design it.
Right, and the thing to remember is that if none of us, if you don't necessarily have kids, we all have one thing in common, is that we at one time were kids.
Yes.
And this, this group of kids, or ex-kids, as the case may be, would have benefited, I know I would have benefited greatly from having a piece of technology like this that was relatively cheap and would do all these kinds of things, and then, you know, infrastructure built up around it that would help.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm, I'm hoping, it's, it's, you know, an infrastructure that analog stuff on, I, I can get all my buffering done, and then if I throw one of the fifty cent digital chips on it, which is reprogrammable, the analog stuff is not reprogrammable, so that would be flash, so you've got a, a scope and a function generator and the ability to do some, you know, read some lines and all of that happy stuff, and, you know, it'd be a ten kilohertz device. You know, fifteen dollars, twenty, twenty, you know, it, it, as low a cost as you can make it. The ESP thirty-two S C threes, which are the, the RISC versions, are tiny. And they, they are just about the width of a, the, a micro SD card, one of the Adafruit micro SD card readers. So if I put that on top of the, the micro SD card reader, um, then I've got, you know, maybe half an inch of space, and in that space I can put the analog buffers and I think I can put all the stuff necessary to drive the, um, the ESP. Haven't done it yet, but that's what I'm hoping for.
Sounds, sounds a bit risky to me.
Well. Yeah.
That was a pun.
Yeah, not a good one. But so it's, it's, um, I, I have not, you know, I plugged in the, um, I've got some of the larger C three modules which I plugged into one of the prototyping systems that I have, and, you know, they, uh, once I kind of got them figured out, the ESP thirty-two tools run them just perfectly, I mean, there was no, you know, you, you've got, you, you have to kind of hit a couple of options and then you just select the, uh, the device that you want to write to and, you know, it, it, it is, there are minor incompatibilities between the non-RISC and the RISC devices, they're mostly in the counter timer, um, that's the only place, and I don't use much of the counter timer, um, I've got to do a little more digging into it, um, because the DMA structure is, I'm still not fully aware of how the, you know, I, I've done the DMA routines, but they're still to be able to DMA to the A to D converters or from the D to A, you know, to the, from the A to D converters to the D to A converters, so it's, it's all back channel, um, is, uh, I, I haven't accomplished that yet. But I'm, I'm, you know, if I can do a, a, you know, a postage stamp sized board, then OS Park is not going to charge me an arm and a leg. And if it screws up, then I'll do it again.
Yeah, I've been, I've been using, um, this place in Hong Kong. Which is cheaper than OS Park, and I'll tell you, the quality is just as good.
Yeah, it's, it's, I get ads, you know, saying five dollar boards, you know, uh, and, uh, this board would have to be, um, I have a vapor phase setup, so I can do, you know, I can do some fine pitch work. If I could see what I was doing, that's an entirely different question, but I can, I can do vapor phase soldering. So if I can align everything, yeah, not shake it too much, I can put it in the, the vapor phase and, you know, it, it, it will solder. Uh, I will do this once, I will do this twice, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to do this for a thousand boards. It ain't gonna happen. But it's, it's, you know, I like to assemble my first, the first run boards myself, just because I get embarrassed when I realize that I've made a mistake, so if I do it myself, I can say, you know, it never happened. So it's, um, I can show you the, some of the dialogue tools which are, uh, are superb, they, you know, they, you've got a schematic capture, the tools are free, you've got a schematic capture package, you can lay down counters, connect them to pins, um, it's a wonderful drag and drop interface, you know, they've, they spend, uh, it's a lot of work in it, it runs Linux, that's how I run it, I think it runs DOS, um, they've got a line of maybe twenty chips, um, most of them are reprogrammable, the, uh, they've got some devices that will run two amps in an H bridge, so you can run stepper motors, um, it's, it's a, um, it's a really nice platform, or it appears to be. I'll let you know when I've delved into it, but they've, they've clearly put a lot of work into it, and they're cheap.
So Nick.
Yep.
Uh, looking at, uh, the, the selection offered by Mauser, I could only find three that were reprogrammable, and all the rest were one-time programmed, was I?
It's, it's, the, the digital ones tend to be reprogrammable, um, and the, uh, the analog ones, for logical reasons, are right ones, um, I've not, you know, it's, the, um, I, you know, there, there, uh, I, I have no particular allegiance to dialogue, they're tools were, uh, I've got the, I have the Altera development kit, I have the Intel development kit, I have the XR development kit, I've got development kits up the wazoo, and they all require that you, you know, they, they, they take a bunch of effort, and they're not, you know, they're not entry level toolkits.
Right, well.
It's, I, I think.
Yeah.
This, this. Go ahead.
No, I was, I was just gonna, I was just gonna comment that the, the, the three, uh, reprogrammable ones, um, are restricted to some analog functions, um, the ones that, uh, provided asynchronous state machines are one-time programming, and I was really hoping that, uh, at least one of them would be, uh, would be multiple program, but it reminds me of the old days, those of you who wrote code with punch cards know that, uh, it was kind of a pain in the butt to fill a hole back in if you put it in the wrong place, right? So, you know, this one-time programming is, uh, is, is, is just like going back to the good old days where your code had to be correct the first time.
I remember a whole hanging Chad thing in Florida with an election, so it's, uh, it hasn't gone away.
Well, that, that was a different kind of bug, I think, but, uh.
Move that off. This is the, uh, the analog part that I'm playing with, it has a chopper stabilized amplifier, the, the software is free, um, you, you've got, um, a couple of references, uh, if you want an op-amp, you throw down the op-amp here, um, okay, those are references, um, you've got analog switches, uh, and it's, uh, let's see if I can, um, okay. My, you know, it's, you, you, it's a, it's a drop and drag interface, um, relatively simple, uh, that, uh, now, it's, uh, it's, it's well thought out, uh, what you see at the top, these are programmed I to C, so what you see at the top, this is the I to C programming bits that you're hitting when you connect stuff, um, and, um, let's see, um, you've got, um, okay, you've got some rather nice, uh, digital parts in there which would make nice scope attenuators, um, you've got, you know, I squared C pins, uh, it's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a mishmash of stuff, but it's, it's moderately good, you've got two comparators, um, there, I just played down a comparator, um, and I should be able to connect the comparator to the output, it should do it, yeah. Okay, there, I, I connected the comparator, you know, this is the entire interface, and when you've got the thing done, uh, this is the I to C bit pattern that you would flash a device with. That's, you know, uh, and this doesn't require that you use, that you use Vlog or any, you know, um, it's, it's accessible to, um, to lots of people. And the, uh, they have, uh, I'm not sure, you know, they have a, let's see, uh, they've got a schematic library of, of various stuff, um, you've got, um, anyway, it's, it, 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 it is a quite respectable toolkit. It's free. They, the company is well financed and they, uh, you know, if, if they, they, they have a student program, I am a hundred percent sure that, um, using my powers of persuasion, I could convince them to provide parts for the, you know, for teaching the young ones. So that's, that's, uh, but this is, this, these are the toolkits, you can download them from, okay, these are all the devices that they have and the, oh, go away, um, and they're, they're, they all appear to be in the fifty, seventy-five cent range, um, and they've got, uh, pattern generators, they've got, this is a stepper motor driver, um, they've got oscillators, phase lock loops, um, um, they've got, uh, you know, uh, a, a number of devices and, you know, some fairly good library, uh, um, yeah, yeah, I'll do that, yeah, yes, I don't care, um, okay, let's see, bring the other one in, um, okay, this is, this has got power fats, um, you know, it's, uh, for fifty cents, you know, uh, you get some fat drivers, you can do the lookup tables, um, thermal overload, run stepper motors, um, that kind of stuff. Uh, you've got, you know, eight bit counters, you can set, uh, okay, I don't want to, um, there's a, there's a nice eight bit counter, uh, and it gives me all the parameters for the eight bit counter, um, you've got, you've got some phase lock loops, this is not blindingly fast stuff, but I think it, uh, it's, I, it looks to be fun. And, you know, it's, it, it looks to be, um, the type of thing that, um, you could do as a throwaway board and people would like. So that's, uh, and I, uh, say, I'm, I'm, I've, I, I design from the bottom up in that I, you know, lay down a, I'll lay down the ESP thirty-two and then decide, you know, okay, I gotta hook in the, the SD card, I'll look at what pins I have left over and, and, um, then work out what to drop in from there, um, and then when I've got the basic design, write the spec from the design, if you don't like it, then you can step in line with, you know, everyone at IBM, et cetera, they didn't like it either, but they lived with it. And some of these are fairly high voltage being twenty, thirty volts, so that's what I'm, uh, that's, you know, this, this is the toolkit, they've got, uh, um, okay, save the changes, no, I don't want to save the changes, um, you know, this, this one was particularly attractive because it had the, um, the ability to do gain control, and if I was going to do a scope, I'd want to be able to adjust the gain, um, and a chopper stabilized amplifier, uh, it's, um, I could think of some fun things to do with that, particularly running into a twelve bit A to D converter which the, uh, the ESPs have, it just, you know, driving, driving them is not, uh, um, you've got to have a fairly low impedance source. So that's my, my ramble. I'm, I'm particularly interested.
Quick novice question.
Okay.
Novice question, what, what is DFF?
Discrete Fourier transform.
Got it, okay, so the, uh, the two and three bit LUTs, lookup tables, are alternatives to discrete Fourier transforms.
I'm, you know, a DFT is, is, what I know is, is a, um,
Oh, no, yeah, I, I was, I was, I was saying DFF, uh, delta foxtrot, foxtrot.
Let's see, I can bring it up, it's, it's basically you've got a, a lookup table that you can program the values into, you've got four inputs.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know what they're, you know.
What I'm looking at is, is that for these things, these macro cells, it's an either or, either two bit lookup table or DFF zero, whatever that means.
Yep, or a latch.
Or a latch, but I'm trying to figure out what DFF means.
Uh, well, let me see if I can, uh, DFF latch, um, okay, apply, see what it says, uh, yeah, I do, I don't care, um, it's a, um, it's a something mode, it's not a discrete Fourier transform, um, it's some kind of state machine. It's the best I can, um, I didn't.
Excuse me. Yeah, yeah.
So you've, you've, you've got, you know, um, you've got, you know, you've got a whole bunch of, you know, you can do ripple counters and, uh, you've got some, uh, oscillators, um, that you can, uh, you can run your clock circuits on, um, yeah, they're not blindingly fast, but, uh, you know, um, let's see, um, yeah, um, too many screens, um, information, um, control pins, oscillator pins, does it say, um, okay, it's a two kilohertz oscillator, um, they've got some, um, I think they have some of the, I think some of the devices go, um, they're all two kilohertz, um, anyway, that, you, you get the general idea.
Ah, how about, how about, uh, uh, words starting with D flip-flop?
Okay, uh, JK.
No, I don't think it's JK, I, what, what's the dead simple one, um, um, not JK, but.
I think it's called a D flip-flop, isn't it?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, D flip-flop, that's, but, yeah, yeah, what?
Yep.
Duh, okay. That's what I was looking for, so it's a D flip-flop, so, so each of these little things, if they're not going to be the, um, the analog function, can be the classic lookup table backed up with the D, with the, with the flip-flop.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
You, you, you can, uh, you know, it's, it's one of the things that I toyed with was, you know, they've, the, uh, the two amp one has a internal, in fact, they most of them do, have an internal temperature sensor, um, you've got a hey presto stepper motor drive with over temperature, you're done, you know, it's a, you can take the ESP, put this tiny chip on it, and you can drive two amp stepper motors.
Yep.
So it's, it's, it's sort of, uh, yeah, I mean, it might, you might shoot half a dozen boards, maybe more, at fifty cents a piece while you, um, writhe in agony getting it correct, but, um, once you, once you're there, then, uh, you're there.
Yeah, there's not a lot of agony to do with fifty cents, is there?
No. And, you know, it's, it's. Yeah.
I, I, I think if I, if I burnt through about a hundred of them, then that, that would probably be agony.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, and if you didn't learn anything burning through a hundred of them, then, um.
You, you, you should be doing something else.
Buy another hundred.
Yeah, buy another hundred, right, there, there you go.
You know, I've got, I've got fifty, uh, I, I picked one, got fifty of them, I have my OS, my OS Park boards back, um, which is just a general, uh, thirty-two pin quad flat pack mounting board which brings out the pins, um, it's, uh, Pete has two programmers, which should be here next week, uh, I should be able to program this through, directly through the ESP, but, um, it always, it's always better if you have something that's known to work before you venture out into the jungle. It's an important lesson that I've learned. So it's, it's, um, you know, I, I'd say, I, I think the devices are very interesting, um, the ESP thirty-twos, the analog stuff is a, an afterthought, the, um, the C threes, which are the risky ones, are very I/O bound, um, so, you know, throwing one of these on would give you, you know, essentially an I/O expander on that, um, particularly if you're going, I'd like to use a quad, uh, SD card so I can load stuff fairly quickly, um, but that's, that's sort of what I'm, um, what I am toying with. And it, it is, as I say, I'm, um, I'd like to in the next, you know, week, ten days, um, get a first run board out, um, you know, it's a, fail miserably, but it's a, by the time I get to the fiftieth board, it'll be, you know, everything will be fine, I hope, um. So it's, it's, I'm looking for input into this, you know, intellectual input.
So, um, this looks really great, I mean, the, the, the tool couldn't be easier to use, uh, it's, it's really, uh, very refined. And, uh, I got curious, as, as you mentioned, I, uh, I, I visited Mauser last night, and I spotted a pair, I spotted some debuggers that had been backordered, but they were, they were expecting a shipment of a, of a few dozen in, uh, on Wednesday, so I went ahead and I placed an order for a pair of them in the hopes that they'll come in and, and we'll get to before the thundering herds snatch the rest of them up, um, but I also ordered a handful of the reprogrammable ones and the, um, I managed to paste the datasheet URL in twice into the chat window, and it is, uh, it does have a handful of different functions, but it's in a twenty fin T sop, which is a thin, small outline package that is, uh, downright trivial to solder versus a QFN, and, uh, uh, I got some Adafruit breakout boards, and I thought, um, I could solder these on to the Adafruit breakout boards, and while you are working on the mainline, uh, uh, combination, you know, integrated with ESP thirty-two, perhaps it might be fun for, for some of us to, uh, uh, play with this other one that can be, uh, jiggered and reprogrammed, the, the sticking point though is, is, uh, the programming, so as you mentioned earlier, you've, your, your approach is going to be to, uh, feed the, uh, the magical, uh, bit stream and through I squared C.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, uh, I, I was curious whether or not there are any dev boards for these Greenpack chips, I, I didn't stop to, 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 to think, to look, look for them last night, but maybe you've come across some.
There, there, there are some that are documented in the, um, let's see, debug, um, cancel, um, there are, you know, there, there are some that are mentioned, um, components, okay, what is it, um, property, project information, there, there, there are a couple of boards that they have, options, tools, demo kits.
Yeah, so, oh, here we go, yes, development board selector, I just, I just found it by, by, by lucky accident.
Okay.
Oh, there, you, you can get the fifty-nine dollar one or the thirty-five dollar one, okay. So they get a fair price for them. They get a fair price for them.
Yeah, well, they they get a fair price. I I was a little bit offended, and then I realized that the reason they get a fair price is that they contain reusable sockets. So you've, you know.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's, that's that's a tricky socket. So I I was.
Exactly, yeah.
I was less offended.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. So they've uh.
One thing that we we might consider is is uh um. You know, both with with what you're developing and uh in a minute, we're gonna start talking about the 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 other project, so to speak, but uh uh, I thought it 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 might be fun to uh come up, you know, get get to blanky with one of these simple ones while you're uh uh working on the integration with the the uh ESP thirty-two. But it was just a thought.
Okay, I mean, it's a um. Uh, let's see, I think this is uh, I don't know the availability of the boards. Yeah, this is one of the development boards they have. Um. And, you know, it's a um. The 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 debugger thing that you ordered plugs in there, um, you can plug in the uh socket here, or you can program the board, and they've got uh um. You know, this is all this, all the stuff that is on the board, all all on that particular chip. And, you know, this, these connect you to uh um. You know, the analog switches and blah blah. Um. So it's uh um, I just, I I wanna make something the size of a uh a postage stamp that uh um is ridiculously cheap and disposable. If I blew this one up, um, I would be, you know, it's a probably, probably a a hundred and twenty dollar board. If I blew that up, I would be sad, um, if I blow.
Yeah.
Uh uh um. Um, and they've they've got other boards, um, but the, my uh um. Okay, yeah, this is another one, um. Where is it? Where is it? Um. Okay, this is, this is another, this is their stepper motor driver board and um. You know, it's a um. So they, I mean, they've done a hell of a lot of work. And they're German engineers. I think they're German, so they, you know, um. They're not like English engineers, which tend to be a little sloppier. So that's a um. That that's the sort of, and I'm I'm doing this, uh. I I I I think that a board for the young ones would be a good idea, um. This, I I I have. I believe I have customers for this little thing here. Um, and, you know, it's a uh, and uh, so if I, you know, if I can develop this board, lay it out, and it does what I need, and it does, you know, it it provides a more general function, then everyone will be happy.
Uh, remind me, uh, I I don't actually see it on your screen. What what is the part number of the part that you bought fifty of? It's the SLG which?
You know, I I picked one, essentially picked one at random. Uh, I'll go take a look. Um, I mean, they're they're on the other side. I I I um.
But you got the, you got the one that's the thirty-six pin, I mean, sorry, thirty-two pin QFN.
Yeah, I I I, you know, I I figured I.
Lots of I/O.
Yeah, I think I I figured I wanted to get something, you know, something in my hand so that uh, and I think I ordered one that was reprogrammable. I might not have. I just wanted, you know, I wanted to get something um that I could, you know, kick. And, you know, it's a, so uh, and I I I laid out the board, you know, did a quick layout, OS parks, you know, turned it around in a um quickly for me and, you know, done. Um, and you know, one of my uh experience gained is directly proportional to equipment ruined. So, you know, I'm I'm. I intend to gain some some experience. Um. You know, I've ruined my share of equipment.
Um. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I was looking at the um. The parts. And trying to figure out. I think three of them are reprogrammable and and the other ten are one-time program. Um. It was interesting, too, this this this, the the one that I picked has seven eight-bit counters and one sixteen-bit counter. Which uh was was cute, because of course you could uh you could uh string those together into into some interesting uh functions. But um I I I I made it, I I went the other way from you, I towards a a much smaller package, so it has very few I/O pins compared to the one that you picked.
Uh, forty-six, um. One, that's the one I picked. I don't know why I picked it.
Oh, okay, let me uh get my act together here.
Okay.
I wanted to write that down. Uh, what was it? SLG? What was the number?
Uh, it's an SLG four-six-eight-eight-one V. It may be the wrong part.
Got it.
The um. Um.
Okay.
Two voltage references, crystal oscillator, you know, it has a crystal oscillator, which I thought would be a good idea, um analog temperature sensor, um eight-bit counter, sixteen-bit counter, um, it has a twenty-five megahertz oscillator, um. Um. You know, it seemed like a um. Uh, it seemed like a, you know, a a pretty nice generic uh um um thing to start with.
Yeah. Certainly does.
And, you know, it's it's, I didn't spend, you know, I didn't spend a great deal of time, uh. It's a um. Whatever I ordered would 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 be wrong, so just, you know, pick, go go with your best bet and uh um, that's a place to start. Um.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, two, I'd say twenty-five megahertz, and I I think this has the phase lock loop on it. I don't, not sure, I don't see that. Anyway, it's not, it does have a crystal oscillator, which is uh um. You can, you know, um. Uh, let's see here, V ref, no, I don't think it has a phase lock. Some of them have phase lock loops um that are useful as clock generators, but, you know. Forty-five megahertz um is is a respectable, um, um. It's a respectable frequency.
I am very struck by the fact that uh in fact, I'm I'm confused, um. I'm looking at the Mauser SLG four-six. So is it four-six-eight-eight-eight-one V?
Yes. Uh, yeah, there's a four-six-eight-eight-zero, uh, there's a four-six-eight-eight-one. I ordered the eight-eight-one. Don't know what the difference is, um.
I'm I'm stunned to say that they're they're listed by uh on the Mauser site as thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents apiece.
Okay.
How can that be? This must be, this must be, no, 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 this has gotta be a kit. I mean, sorry, this has gotta be a dev board.
Yeah, no, no, I think I think that is the dev board, that that.
It is the dev board. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. It, yep, 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 yep. I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to find the the chip itself to uh to look at the, to compare the data sheet. And all I can find, every single listing and octopart is of the flipping.
Yeah.
Uh, dev board. They make it hard.
Well, if it was easy, then all the young kids would do it and would be out of a job. It's job protection. It's like knowing COBOL, which I don't know, but if I did, it would be uh.
Oh, hey, no, 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 we we don't need to worry about COBOL. We're in the twenty-first century. So we can use Java.
Oh.
My brother-in-law, who writes COBOL programming for nuke plants, would argue.
If it gets them through the night, I have no, you know, um.
This is amazing. I can only, I I I have yet to find the the chip. I can only find the uh the dev board for your chip, so. Uh, you were very skillful in uh in picking that. Did you buy from Mauser also?
Uh, I think so. I, you know, I I uh, you know, it's, I rooted around and uh the you know, it's it's, I I sort of weighed the options and said, well, you know, there there's probably a better option, but to hell with it, um, I'm going with this. Um, and.
Yeah.
You know, it's a um, it was, it was just a um. Uh.
Yeah.
You you gotta start somewhere.
Well, yeah, no, right. I mean, uh, certainly, um. I don't know why I'm coming across to ju- as judgmental, but uh uh, I don't, I I I do not, I I do not mean to be. I I'm really not wanting to do that.
There there are a a whole line of 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 people behind you that have applied judgment to me. Um, that uh not a, not, you know, you feel free. Um. So anyway, that that's sort of uh uh uh. By, you know, the the next meeting, um, if if I, you know, if I um advance things, I'll I'll send out an update, but hopefully by the next meeting, um, I will have made substantial progress, um, and, you know, the the um. I I I did the original design for uh the solidity detector using uh the ESPs. Um, when I realized that the input impedance on the ESPs was, you know, fifty-six K bias to who knows what. And it's probably glitchy as hell. It's like, uh, I need a uh um, I need a better solution. Um, but it it wasn't until I prototyped it that, no way does it list things like the input impedance. Um. That's not a a thing listed on the data sheet. Clearly, they're not analog engineers. Anyway, so that's that that's that's, those are my words, um. For the day.
Okay, well, um. I was kind of thinking that other, some other folks would have attended tonight uh to discuss what's been going on with the working group. Um. And uh in a nutshell, uh, the first meeting was, from my point of view, focused on people getting to know each other and discussing uh in in very general terms, uh uh interests, shared interests and so on. Um, hopefully, everybody has seen the notes that were published and the the top set of those, Rob Mackey wrote. Uh, pretty much covered it. Subsequent to that, there have been a handful of little investigations going on. Uh, in particular, um. We found out that in addition to the ESP thirty-two supporting the typical C, C++ scenario, and also, many of you are probably aware that that it also supports MicroPython and a language called Lua. Um. Mike Mac, Mike Macahan, oh, boy. Monahan, sorry. Mike Monahan discovered a small uh simplified version of node dot G S, which is, as I understand it, is is a kind of a it's a JavaScript
Yeah, I I uh.
System. And, yeah, uh. The interesting thing to me is that it it it, it's my understanding that it uses uh the web as as its I/O mechanism.
Yeah.
And there is.
There's a uh a a front-end, there's a toolkit for that called VUE three, which is my preferred web programming platform thing. But Node two S is 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 a superb, um, and uh VUE three is a a nice, nice interface.
And uh let's see, so it's VUE three.
VUE three.
Yeah, which I think, yeah. The other interesting thing uh from a kind of just a theoretical level is that it's possible that the uh kitty language, uh, I shouldn't call it a kitty language, because I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the MIT Scratch language is um. It's very radical. It's it's very, very, very radical in the sense that um. It makes an, it makes an ordinary interpreter look like I don't know what, um, because as you mutate the program with Scratch, the execution immediately reflects the changes to the code, and so it gives the uh person extremely tightly coupled feedback about how their changes to the code have, are are reflected in 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 the behavior. Um, but it's my understanding that the current versions of Scratch are entirely web-based. So they're, the the, you're you're looking at a web browser and Scratch itself is running um uh in the browser and or uh perhaps in the uh, in a backend server uh for like persistence and so on. But the old versions, the old original versions ran standalone. And uh Mike and I there or not, it might be feasible to run those on an ESP thirty-two, but I, in another vein, uh, there's been a bit of research about running Linux on an ESP thirty-two. And uh we found one highly questionable uh Hackaday article in which somebody said, uh, they watched a five dot O kernel come up and uh uh, I personally think that that's uh not an, not an indication that ESP thirty-two supports Linux. It's an indication that somebody got something to happen that drew the of Hackaday. Um.
Yeah, I.
But it is the case.
With, I don't think you can run Linux on an ESP thirty-two. I think.
Well, it turns out.
You can do it.
It it turns out that the um, and I believe Nick's got a machine like this, but also Mike Mike Monahan has got a customized uh ESP thirty-two with a very large amount of outboard memory. In particular, uh uh many, 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 many gigabyte, uh, sorry, many mega megabytes of pseudo-static RAM. And that is yours, yours has sixteen?
Yep.
Um, I should look up. I should look up, yeah, I should look up what I got about his, the number 64
This is one with
Kind of sticks in my head.
Well, it's, it's, they're listed as 64 bits, 64 megabits, but you have to think in terms of bytes. They kind of trick, trick you. This is, this is an eight, this is one with a, an ESP32 with an ethernet connection. There are, I'm surrounded by ESP32s.
Well, anyway, yeah, to Carl's it, it certainly requires a extremely, extremely stripped down Linux to the point where it's, 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 it's more like, you know, as, as many of us know, there's Linux in a lot of our little appliances, like, like little set-top boxes and network boxes and so on. And those are, tend to be extremely Spartan, very, very stripped down. So you're not going to be running code, Visual Studio Code on your ESP32. But the, the interesting angle to that in turn seemed to be that Mike North and Jeff Johnson got into a conversation about using tool chains that are historically designed to manage the builds of embedded systems, but they're very Unix, sorry, they're very Linux-centric. And they're really oriented towards embedded Linux rather than more of a, closer to the metal or, or ARTOS-based like we have with ESP32. So
That's just for reference.
There's
I run node.js on my Linux machine, running VUE3, and when I make a change in the VUE code, it automatically propagates out to the board.
That's nice. Yeah, so, so it could be that the Scratch, what you see is what you get instantly is, is the, the JavaScript.
If anyone has any thoughts about what they would like to see on a tiny little board for the youngins to fool around with, and I mean youngins by youngins of any age, drop me a line and I'll, you know, do what I can. And, you know, it's, if anyone wants to, yeah, it'll, it'll have LEDs and PISOs and, you know, I mean, it'll, it'll have connections for that. I have I have need to run some PISOs, but I need more bits than the eight. And I have lots of LEDs that, that should, that need to be run. And the, the, the memory bound comment on the ESP32, you can, although I'm not entirely sure that I know how to do it, but you can, you, it's not as memory bound as it would appear to be, particularly if you have an SD card. Because it has a 16 kilobyte internal cache and it reads stuff from the, from the flash memory into the internal memory, which it does at pretty high speed. But it can, it should also be able to read from the SD card and run, you know, ridiculously large programs if you are so, so inclined.